All right, six, it's five o'clock. We'll get the meeting started. Public hearing for the Sawyer County zoning board of appeals is hereby called to order at 5:00 PM in Sawyer County courthouse, Main Street Hayward, President on behalf of the board, Al Gerber, Laura Russ, Steve Kelsey, and Jim Tiffany from the zoning office, Jay Koslowski and Pat Brown. Those persons, these hiring gifts pertinent testimony will be afforded the opportunity to do so, as recognized by the chairman, and that person shall clearly state their full name before giving testimony. Each hearing will follow this order, reading of the application, submission of the file to the board, applicant's statements and presentation of evidence, testimony of those in support of the application, statements from persons in objection to the application, rebuttal as permitted by the board and decision by the board. Orderly procedure requires that each side shall proceed without an interruption by the other. All testimony will be addressed to the board, and there will be no questions or arguments between individuals. Any persons agreed by decision of the board may appeal the decision to the circuit court within thirty days of the date following the board's decision letter. The day following the signing of the board's decision letter is the first day of the thirty day appeal filing period. This public hearing has been published as a class two notice in accordance with Wisconsin Chapter nine eighty-five, Wisconsin statutes in Sawyer County Record and Sawyer County Gazette. The public hearing will follow this order, variance, application, new business and adjournment. Did I state today's date, July seventh, July nineteen seventeen? Eighteen, all right, we're good.
Next to be for approval.
Okay, did everybody read this, receive a copy of the minutes from the last, our last meeting?
Yes.
Any changes, alteration, deletions? Okay, is there a motion to approve those minutes as presented?
I make a motion.
Motion seconded.
Motion was made in second of discussion on the motion. Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, signify saying aye. Aye. All pose same sign, let the record reflect the motion, pass it by vote of four zero.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have two variance applications this evening. The first is a public hearing in the town around Lake, variance number twenty-three dash zero zero three, owner John and Jeannie Skull, part of government lot two, parcel number zero two four seven four one zero nine five two zero three. It is two point three nine acres zone, forestry one and residential recreational one. The application is for the construction of an attached garage and shop area with second story habitable living area. Option A is for a forty-one foot by twenty-six foot addition, including a ten by seventeen and a half foot bump out area. The proposed expansion would be two feet at the closest point to a non navigable wetland, or option B, which would be for a thirty-four foot by twenty-eight foot, including a ten foot by nineteen and a half foot bump out area. This proposed expansion would be seven feet at the closest point to a non navigable wetland. Setbacks are measured to the eve overhangs, which includes this additional two feet. Variance is requested of section six point one of the Sawyer County Shoreline Wetland Protection Ordinance, which would require the prior granting of a variance for any structure closer than forty feet to a non navigable wetland. Again, option A is requesting a two foot setback, option B is requesting a seven foot setback. A previous variance for a garage was approved in two thousand and seven for a nine foot setback. The existing garage would be removed with an approved new variance. As per my staff report, an onsite inspection was conducted on May first of this year by myself. At that time of the onsite, the proposed expansion area was laid out on the property. The applicants have been planning some type of expansion area on this property over the last few years. Previous onsite back in two thousand and twenty-one was looking at utilizing the existing garage area and trying to attach the existing house to the existing garage. This type of expansion has some very unique angles and would be very difficult to structurally design and connect. The current variance request would instead remove the existing garage and create a straight line addition onto the existing house and into a newly constructed garage with habitable living area above. If the garage is connected to the house, this is all treated as the same principal structure and that habitable area is allowed. Ultimately, there are two separate options in which the applicants have requested this variance for. Option A, the option for that part of the variance would be slightly wider, but not as deep. That would have a total footprint area of one thousand two hundred and forty-one square feet. Option B isn't as wide, but it would be deeper. This would have a total footprint area of one thousand one hundred and forty-seven square feet. Option A again is requesting a two foot setback from the eve to a non navigable wetland. Option B would be for a seven foot setback from the eve to the wetland at the closest point. The existing twenty-four by twenty-four garage on the property was approved by a variance in two thousand and seven with a nine foot setback granted to this wetland. The existing garage again would be removed with any new variance approval. Other locations were explored during the time of the onsite as well. There is some area to expand off the front of the house going closer to the road and lake, but this area ultimately has some topography challenges. There is a sewer system location in this area as well as the alternative drain field location, and would it not be as aesthetically pleasing as to it would block the view of the lake with a placement of a larger garage in this location? It was also proposed to the applicant if they could purchase additional land to the north and build off the other side of the house, which gets further away from this wetland. The adjacent parcel is a vacant landowner and the skulls have tried reaching out to that owner multiple times without success. Per action of the town board, motion was denied. That was unanimously denied. The findings of facts is that no hardship exists, variance could result in harm to public interest. That was signed Kathy McCoy, town clerk. There were six additional comment letters sent out to adjacent property owners. None of those were returned. We did get correspondence back from the DNR as well. Would you like me to read that one into record?
Yes, please, so, so.
I'm going to summarize the first half of it because the first half of it's always the same. The Department of Natural Resources, thank you for giving us the opportunity to apply for your comments. As the board reviews the variance request, please keep in mind that the applicant has the burden of providing their application meets each of the three statutory requirements for granting of a variance. Wisconsin Supreme Court has made it clear that the proof of unnecessary hardship by itself does not entitle an applicant to a variance. All three statutory variance criteria must be satisfied in order to grant a variance. They are unique physical limitations. The applicant must demonstrate that unique physical limitations, wetlands, steep slopes, streams, rock outcroppings, or special conditions of the property exist that prevent compliance with ordinance regulations. The physical limitations must be unique to the property in question and not generally shared by other properties in the area. When determining if compliance is prevented, the whole parcel must be considered. That there is no harm to, no harm to public interest. The applicant must demonstrate that the variance will not result in harm or be contrary to public interest. The board must consider the impacts of the proposed project as well as cumulative impacts of similar projects on the interests of the neighbors, community and general public. These interests are listed in the proposed, or the purpose statement of the ordinance and for shoreline zoning include protection of public health, safety, welfare, maintenance of clean water, protection of fish and wildlife habitat, and preservation of natural scenic beauty. Unnecessary hardship. The applicant must demonstrate that the variance, if the variance is not granted, an unnecessary hardship exists. The applicant may not claim unnecessary hardship because of conditions which are self imposed or created by prior owners. For example, building a home in compliance and then subsequently constructing the deck without a permit. Courts have determined that economic or financial hardship does not justify a variance. Similarly, the courts has determined that a circumstance of the applicant does not justify a variance. When determining whether unnecessary hardship exists, the board must consider the property as a whole, not rather just a portion of the parcel. It is a responsibility of the BOA to ensure that all three statutory standards are there for granting of the variance. For further, a variance is to be the minimum relief necessary. The department understands that the applicant is moving to the property in question year round, and it is a central premise to their request. Nothing in the application packet describes or demonstrates that an unnecessary hardship exists, nor that the request is for the minimum relief necessary. The applicant wanting a larger and attached garage slash shop and additional living area, while understandable, is a circumstance or desire of the applicant, not an issue with the property. The property has in the past and continues to maintain reasonable legal use without the requested structure. For these reasons, the apartment recommends the request be denied. Thank you for the opportunity to apply to provide these comments. Mike Weinhold, Shoreline Program, Policy Coordinator for the Wisconsin Department of Natural Resources. That is all.
Could you go back quickly to the town around Lake?
Yes.
Their statement said something about harm to public interest.
As per the comments signed by the clerk for their findings of facts that no hardship exists and the variance could result in harm to public interest.
That they don't expand on what that harm might be?
Nope.
Okay.
Should the planning commission weigh in on it also?
Yeah, I generally don't receive the town plan commission's information. Ultimately, the town plan commission makes a recommendation to the town board. Town board makes a recommendation to you.
Okay.
Right, um, Jay, when you did your onsite, did you happen to go into the existing garage?
I did.
You saw the condition of the floor in there?
I did.
How it was deteriorating? All right. Okay, any other questions to Jay before we? Is it, are the schools here or someone to speak on their behalf? You'll need to step to the, step to the microphone and identify yourself. If you have anything to pass out, you can do that now. You won't get it back. That's fine, we can share. Thank you. Your first need to state your name, sir.
Yeah, hi, I'm John School and this is my wife Jeannie School. All right. You can see from the plan, the, the existing structure is not there. That is just a, I've seen a view of the addition on the plans there. So the existing structure, the living area, the first floor is eight hundred and fifty square feet. The basement has an additional three hundred and fifty square feet. We have kind of a unique situation and Jay had presented that to you. We've got wetlands, so almost all surrounding our acreage. On the front side of the, was the existing cabin. We've got our septic system, which is fifty feet from the, the drain field is fifty feet from the, the road. So we're kind of stuck there. We can't expand that way. On the, on the west side, we've got a acreage that is owned by a person that I've been trying to get a hold of for a number, number amount of years and have had no success. Because we wanted to buy that land and expand that to the, to the west side there, where there is no wetland and there would not be a problem with the variance. So our other option was to go towards the wetlands. And, you know, the, the existing structure has, it's detached from the garage. We, we have retired. We live there permanently now. We've got three children that come up with their, their children. I've got an elderly mother that likes to come up and visit and we, and we would really need some space to accommodate when, when people are visiting as well. We've decided to go with option B. I know Jay had presented both options, but we've decided to go with option B to, to impede less on the wetlands and we will make do with option B, so it would be a reduced structure, which.
Okay, we can proceed with that. What does, is this option B?
Yes.
It is option B. Yes, thank you.
Yes. Yeah, so the, the option A would have shown you a third stall, which was an additional width. So that stall that you see there, that third stall, has been reduced to, to include that seven foot setback as opposed to the nine foot, or the, I'm sorry, the two foot setback.
Right.
During, you know, during construction, we've talked to contractors. We will, we will do all we can to protect the wetlands, silt fences, barriers of any kind that we can put up to protect, protect the wetlands. We will plant any native plants that were harmed in the, in the construction. We will replant that. We will, the frost wall that will be supporting this structure will be going four foot into the ground, eight inches wide and I'm not sure, I can't say what it is existing and the existing structure, but the way that garage shifts and buckles in the winter, I don't believe it was constructed accurately.
Do you think that's eventually going to have to be removed?
In my, in my opinion, yes, at least the floor is going to have to be redone. Because there's cracks in the sidewall, the footings, the footing wall and as well as the garage floor.
I noticed that today when I was there.
And as, as soon as it gets humid or, you know, hot, then the whole floor sweats so bad that you slip in there. I mean, the grandchildren have fallen on the floor. So you have to keep everybody out of the garage when, when it gets hot.
Okay.
You know, having made the option, the decision to retire here, we want to keep things as beautiful as possible and we wouldn't have come up here to, to, you know, to, to come here and live with, in an area that's, that's going to be a total under construction. We, we're nature lovers and like to fish and keep the, keep the natural beauty as, as close to as possible.
We understand that if, if we're held to the letter of the law, that, you know, we won't get this variance, but we're hoping that you'll consider the, the fact that there was a previous variance and that was granted nine feet. So, yeah, we're approaching two more feet, but it's still a seven foot setback.
Any additional comments or information you would like to present? We may have questions for you.
Yeah, sure. The only, the only thing I question is public interest. I, you know, I haven't polled my neighbors or anything. Jay has said he sent out letters and had no response, but I, anybody that we've talked to that has passed our property or visitors have noticed how much we have improved the property from when we purchased it, so. I, to put the public interest, I can't prove that there would be harm to public interest, but I have no evidence that it, that it would harm public interest.
Thanks. Okay. Done for now. Anyone else to speak in support of the application? Anyone to speak in opposition to the application? Hearing none, discussion by the board. These are always the hard ones, aren't they? The ones that aren't blatant. Really don't change anything that's already there, but they're outside the parameters that that the ordinance provide us with.
I mean, it's real close.
Yeah.
You know, but there's something there that's too close anyway now. But it's closer, even closer, and that causes some issues in in size. Fortunately, I think there are options that would not be as close, that aren't in this proposal we can't consider.
Yeah.
You know, under nine feet was a pretty good variance back then. Now we're going closer with more and there's going to be more roof structure, more runoff. So there's a lot of things to consider.
Steve, I think that additional rough structure and runoff could be mitigated better than what it is right now, actually.
Yeah, you're right. I think you're right.
Yeah. And that, that definitely could be part of the, part of the overall game plan here. I, when I was out there today and after I left, I, I thought the, the third garage door was, was going to be a stretch. And I'm glad to see that the applicants rolled that back from, from two feet to seven.
Did I miss it? Did you? Did you look at an alternative of going up? Maybe, maybe you said that and I missed where you said it, but the option to expand up.
Yes. You'll need to come to the microphone to answer that.
The, the, the contract, as we've talked to, said that the, the, the actual physical structure that's there now would not support a second story. We'd have to tear it down. And economically, that, that would be, that would be hard to tear it down and just rebuild the whole thing.
Are you talking about the garage, just building up on the garage or the whole structure? Yeah.
The home.
The whole, we looked at.
Yeah.
And back in two thousand and twenty-one, when we looked at, you know, kind of other options to kind of, you know, keep the garage in the same footprint and, you know, attach it to the house with some type of addition. That would have also still required a variance in that that garage was permitted as a detached accessory structure and even the expansion between the house and the garage would be inside of that forty foot setback requirement. So even back then, when we looked at other alternatives, they would have also required variances. The only areas that don't require variances would be to the north if you were ever able to get a hold of that individual, which ironically enough, I see that he's online. And also towards the road, towards the lake, but that becomes problematic with slopes, drain fields, and just kind of how the whole view is set up on that property.
Yeah, totally. That didn't seem like a good option to me.
By looking at the letter of the ordinance and unfortunately, I think some of this is for the convenience of the owner. I understand entirely why they want to do this because it, it would be much more beneficial than what they have now. But I think that's outside the scope of what we can consider if we stick to the rule of the ordinance.
Hey, I always lean towards a common sense approach to these things. And, and I think about why the ordinance was based on how it was and where it was and how it needs to be complied with. And when I look at an application or request like this, I just don't see that this violates the spirit of that ordinance. Obviously does not comply with the letter of, of the law, but I, I don't think that the ordinance for that setback was designed to prevent an application such as this. So unless you guys have any further discussion, I am going to make a motion to approve the request for option B, as presented. And, and I don't think I need to give findings, findings of facts, okay.
It shows as part of the motion.
Okay. Part of my findings is I believe that existing garage is not going to be there very long. I think it's going to deteriorate to the point where it needs to be replaced anyway. And when it gets replaced, putting it two feet closer to the wetland isn't going to make any difference at all to the what was what the town used, safety or safety of the residents of the township. There's, there's no threat or nothing unsafe is going to be created. And I, I don't think their design is unreasonable or considering the size of, the size of the site.
So we're kind of looking at the vest to we.
A little bit, yeah. And, and one of my previous statements was on being able to mitigate the runoff with the, with the new garage, a new structure there. Given up two feet to, to catch that water. I think it's positive and not negative, so. Those are, those are my findings of fact.
Would, I would think that including in that decision would be written in that the capture of that runoff, rain garden, whatever you want to call it. Diversion of some type to mitigate direct runoff, because I think that's important here.
Um, did any of us get the chance to go around behind the existing structure? There is an area there that, that would work.
Okay. Yeah, slight point of order, and that you made a motion, you should have at least a second before further discussion.
Oh, that's what I asked. Okay, is there a second to the motion to approve the request as, as presented under option B?
Jay, can I ask a question before?
Sure.
Incorporating rain garden can come after approval, a second of the motion.
Correct, and that you would have to then amend the motion to add that as a condition for approval. But as a point of order, when the motion is made, you would basically stop all discussion until you have a second. Then during discussion, the motion maker can amend their initial motion.
Okay, I'll second the motion.
Okay. So now the motion's been made in seconded.
So now it's discussion.
Discussion on the motion. I would amend that motion to include the order of installing it an acceptable water catch, rain garden mitigation system to be incorporated within the construction of a size large enough to accommodate the, what, what the additional runoff would be. Because there might be some changes in the roof line in the existing house. Well, not roof line, but maybe changes way the water's going to go. But all that can be investigated and, and filtered into the. Okay, any additional discussion on the motion as amended?
Mr. Chairman, I just want to reiterate the reasons for approval. So I have four and five and seven on the list. It would not be damaging to the rights of others or property values. It would not be detrimental to ecology, wildlife, wetlands or shorelines. It would not create a topographical problem such as runoff drainage, drainage erosion or vegetative cover removal.
Okay, and harm to public interest.
Okay.
Now we would need a second to amend that motion.
I will second that.
Okay, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor of the motion as amended, signify by saying aye. Aye. I'll pose same sign.
Aye.
Jim, I didn't hear your vote.
No.
Yeah, for the first one, there's a, to approve or deny. Right, let the record reflect that the motion is approved by a vote of three to one. Thank you. The zoning office will walk you through the, the application process and the, the design of this rain garden mitigation system. Good luck with your project.
Yep. All right, our second variance application tonight is public here in the town Hunter, variance twenty-three dash zero zero four. Owners Richard and Pamela Camholtz and Craig and Angela Strauss, part of government lots two and three, lot one of CSM number seven eight four seven, parcel zero one two seven four zero zero four five two zero five. It is five point three total acres on residential recreational one. Applications for the construction of a twenty-seven by sixty-six, which is thirty-one by seventy with eaves accessory structure. This is single story. This accessory structure is the form of a garage and would replace an existing fifty-one foot by twenty-six foot with a seven foot by eleven foot bump out garage that's currently there. The proposed accessory structure would be located twenty-five feet at the closest point to a wetland adjacent to the high watermark of Reed Lake. The existing structure is currently fifteen feet to the adjacent wetland. Variance is requested of section six point one, parent one of the Sawyer County Shoreline Wetland Protection Ordinance, which will require the variance of any new structure not replaced within the existing footprint inside of a setback distance of seventy-five feet. The new proposed structure would be placed at twenty-five feet, again replacing an existing one that's at fifteen feet. Let me just catch up on my slideshow. As part of the staff report, an onsite inspection was conducted by Pat Brown on May second of this year. At that time of the onsite proposed building location was laid on the property for a twenty-seven foot by sixty-six foot, again thirty-one foot by seventy foot with eaves. This is a one story accessory building. The building footprint was such, set in such a way. The building footprint was such, uh, set in such a way that it would slide further away, which is north from the wetland. Uh, and take up the majority of the existing accessory structure building footprint. There would be an additional 379 square feet into proposed building versus existing square footage. If the variance is approved, the property owner would remove the existing accessory building located uh, at 19 feet to the ordinary high watermark of Reed Lake. Uh, so we're actually talking about two separate accessory structures that are on the property that would be removed. Because of the property layout, history, location between wetlands and navigable water. This area is only area near the cabins and the dwellings that exist on the property that the applicant could build. Compliant building area would be located 400 plus feet away from the dwelling units, which is, uh, out further on Reed Lake Road. Additionally, the property owner would have the ability to rebuild these structures in the existing footprint and the existing accessory building located 19 feet to the order, uh, ordinary high watermark of Reed Lake with something like or similar use if the variance was denied. Uh, as part of the motion for the town of Hunter, motion was approved. Uh, proved condition, uh, contingent on the removal of the existing buildings. So we're actually again talking about two buildings and we'll bring that up here on the uh, the map here shortly. There were 11 additional comment letters sent out. One was returned with no objections. The DNR also spent, uh, sent us correspondence on this. Thank you to county zoning staff for, uh, letting me submit comments to the Sawyer County BOA. The department understands the requested structure would replace two existing accessory structures that are both closer to the ordinary high watermark than the requested structure. The department recognizes the wetland setback and Sawyer County Shoreline Wetland Protection Ordinance is allowed and is a useful tool for protection, protecting shoreline wetlands. As the board reviews the variance request, please keep in mind that the applicant has the burden of providing their application meets the three statutory requirements for granting a variance. Those three statutory requirements are unique physical limitations of the property, which we previously discussed. No harm to public interest, which was also previously discussed and unnecessary hardships, which was previously discussed. It is the responsibility of the board of adjustments to assure that all three statutory standards for granting of the variance are met. Further, a variance not to be for the minimum release necessary. In reviewing the application packet, the department is unclear how the request represents the minimum relief necessary and recommends the BOA to consider this. If the request is granted, the department recommends that the BOA consider including a requirement to capture and treat runoff from the requested structure, giving its area in close proximity to the shoreline, wetland and lakes. Thank you for the opportunity to provide comments, Mike Wenhold, Shoreland Program Policy Coordinator, Wisconsin Department of Natural Resources. That is all.
Um, you're going to bring up the map.
Eventually. So we have this one laid out in red is the current garage that is on the property that is currently located 15 feet to the wetland that's adjacent to navigable water. We also have another accessory structure within conversations with the applicant would be willing to remove with the approval of a variance. That's located 19 feet to the ordinary high watermark of Reed Lake.
All right. Any questions of the office? All right. Are the applicants here or someone to speak on their behalf?
Hi, I'm, uh, Richard Camholtz. Craig Strauss here is also with the owns the property and, uh, I think that you've all been out there and kind of seen what we want to do. So I'm not sure if you want me to explore through it again, or if you just have any other questions for me.
I don't need to hear. I'm, I think I have a grasp of what game plan is there. I am curious. So did you ever consider, assuming that map is the lake to the north?
Yes.
Yes. Okay.
And to the west.
Well, actually, yeah, kind of on a peninsula. So it's kind of all around.
I got that part. Um, did you ever consider building your structure? So the new structure proposing is going to run north, south.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. Did you ever consider turning it east, west?
Uh, I don't believe there's enough room to go east, west. Uh, it would actually bring us down smaller than what we currently have to run that east, west and still maintain the setbacks from the, the wetlands and the lake.
What's that? Gee, what's this number?
Or one, I don't know.
160?
103.
103?
Yeah.
Go back to the.
Yeah. Well, this is an area that kind of shows that this is that shoreline wetland that curls right here and then goes out to ordinary high. So even if you were to put it into here, you're going to be inside of 75 then at that point.
Oh, okay. I was thinking 40 from the wetland, but, uh,
Craig Strauss, unique.
So you have to identify yourself.
Craig, Craig Strauss, unique with your question is slope. That's probably eight foot higher sloping down towards the wetland.
Okay.
That kind of property.
Yeah. I didn't get to that part of the property. So it's all right. All right. Good enough. That answers that question. Okay. Kind of what you see is what you get. Uh, they may got any additional questions? Oh, the, you read, you heard the response from the department of natural resources about, uh, creating a capture area for, for runoff. Is that doable?
I believe so. I'm, I'm not sure exactly what they're thinking of other than gutters and some sort of catchment system and then um, sending it to a direction that it's not running into the wetlands and the lake.
Maybe Jake could explain that a little bit better.
Yeah. So the department at least, uh, recommended that a, you know, rain garden or some type of, you know, catch basin be installed as to prevent additional water runoff from going into that well and boundary. Yes, it, it is something where, you know, that would be as a guttering system where you would divert it either into an artificially, you know, constructed rain garden, which is, you know, depending, it's a volumetric calculation. So the deeper you go, the less area it is, the shallower you go, the larger the area is. Uh, but it's based upon the amount of rainwater that you're capturing. If you want to capture from both sides or from one side. Uh, I would think that you would have some abilities to kind of both have them go further north, kind of have the downspouts go off the north side of the building and then have some type of constructed rain garden area, which we can help you with calculations on it. Ultimately, it's up to this board as to, you know, make that as a condition for approval. And I think the chairman at this point is at least, you know, asking you is if that's something that you could handle.
I just got a little bit of concern to the north. If you're looking at the square footages. Um, you're within six foot of slope. Significant slope. Which.
They don't necessarily have to go to the north. I mean, we could put them, you know, to the south. There's just not a lot of area there to
Right.
Hold something in there.
And I'm trying to think of square footage, your, your 1800 square foot uh, of, of roof or water. I don't, I don't know what the, what the thing is. I mean, there's certainly not more water going down than it's clearly going down.
Ooh, there would be more roof structure.
Uh, for a rain garden and shallow, a, a shallow rain garden and sandy soils on an 1800 square foot roof area. I'd be looking at an area of 306 square feet. Now again, the deeper you go.
It's not very big.
No. And. And like 30. Uh, yeah.
Right. The deeper you go, the less area that is. That's on a like a three to four inch depression rain garden. Uh, versus if you were to go like six to eight inches deep, that area decreases to like 200 square feet. So.
When I was on site, it would appear north and west. There would be an area for something to be created. That way it wouldn't impede on the cabin to the north or the driveway. And it would be least impacting for your use of the property. I, I think that that would be doable.
And you get rid of the cabin 19 feet from the water.
Yeah.
That's, that's the big win here.
And this one's further from the water.
Yeah.
From the welling.
And at the town level, we did, we did reiterate several times about getting rid of that building. That building has to go. It's not a year down the road. It's still there. As you said, you, you know, didn't have your other thing done yet. And so you still needed a place for the lawnmower. And we were assured at the town level that that would not be the case.
I would think it would be contingent upon that being removed before
Correct.
Land use permit be granted, but we can build that into our.
Yeah, it's something that I, if that is the route you want to go, I would want you to specify a date of removal. So I can at least track it.
Yes, I, I would have no problem. Like I said, I, I'd like to see that other building gone like Sebby because it's too close. It's an eyesore and impedes the, the boat ramp that all the neighbors use to get access to the lake. Um, cause it's just closes in and it's hard to, for them to launch a boat, uh, onto, especially. Uh, so I have no problem in taking that down.
Right.
All we need is, uh, just enough time to get the other building put up. So then I can take all the stuff out of there. Put it in the new building and then that thing can come down. No, no sweat.
What's your timeframe on the new building?
Well, what we're looking at is, uh, getting the concrete down, uh, at the end of this month, if, if that's possible. And then construction will begin like the week after Labor Day and it probably will take us a week to 10 days to finish it. So. We do the interior, we might do our interior.
Before you haul your stuff.
Yeah. That would, that's probably another. That's, that's another week to 10 days. So, uh, as far as that old building, um, if it's acceptable, we could have that down by the end of October with absolutely no problem.
When you say finish on the interior, this, there is no plan for plumbing residential use?
No, we're just talking about getting it wired, insulated and whatever interior wall material we're going to use, have that done. So uh, that's, that's more of a convenience thing because I, I don't have to move everything around twice. Sure. Put it all in and move it back to do the rest of that.
Historically, and I guess that really doesn't apply, but, um, what we've seen in the past is, um, those buildings oftentimes get delayed and don't come down, or sometimes they never come down. And, um, what we have done occasionally is request to require that offsite storage be, be, um, found, uh, for whatever's in that, that shoreline building that's going to come out of there. Um, would you consider that to be an option? You'd end up moving it twice. I, I, I understand that, but, um, one of the key components to, to this project is the removal of that. And, um, we would like to see it gone before, um, land use construction permit is, um, is, uh, it's granted.
The only issue I would have with that is, is currently, uh, the only thing really being stored and they're not the only thing, but most everything are the tools that I'm going to be, need to actually build the new building. Cause we're building it ourselves and, uh, I need to have the tools there, but I can't have like everything out in the weather. If, you know, uh, we get bad storm or whatever, you know, I, uh, I just can't have that kind of stuff out in the weather. So, so I need that onsite and I need it to be undercover just while we build. Uh, I would not be opposed to, uh, if you set a deadline, uh, as far as, uh, whatever date you pick, once the new building is up and then if you want to set a fine rate of a thousand dollars a day, I'm good with that because I know.
All right, um, yeah, I respect that. And this is history that we don't want to repeat itself. So I'm not picking on you or suggesting that you aren't going to do what you say you're going to do. But, um, I'll, I'll refer to the office. Um, what, um?
Yeah. You know, as part of the approval conditions that we have on here, you know, one of those items is that the non-conforming in this case, the non-conforming accessory structure must be removed in X amount of days from the time that the land use permit is issued. Um, so if you want a 90 day removal after issuance, if you want a, you know, six month removal after issuance. And that is discretion of the board. Um, and that then tasks us with the monitoring of that. Um, and we've gotten better on that monitoring, um, now with the digital technology we have, because, you know, back in those olden days, it was notes, it was notes in a, in an envelope that went into a drawer. Now we track it on the computer and sets a reminder that, oh, that removal deadline came up. Let's go out there and make sure it was removed. And if it wasn't, now we have the follow ups and hey, you're not in compliance and here's your citation for a thousand dollars a day.
Don't, don't, let's not do that. All right, I'm, uh, I was gonna call for. Yeah, I know. I gotta do that. Um, any additional comments or information you'd like to share with us, uh, before I ask for?
Uh, I don't, I don't think so. I use, I understand the concern of the removal of the, the other building and, um, you know, whatever you set for a deadline, I, I guarantee you that we will meet and uh, if we get it down, you know, 30 days prior to whatever deadline you said, I'm willing to take pictures or give you guys a call on, have you come out and look? And just to make sure that it's done because I don't want it anymore. I don't want it there anymore than, than, than the board does or the, you know, the community would want it there. So.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Thanks. All right. Uh, anyone else to speak on behalf of the application? Anyone to speak in opposition to the application? All right. Discussion by the board.
I like the fact that I feel we get two wins if we go forward with this. We're further from the wetlands and we're removing a structure from 19 feet from the high water.
That's, that's a big positive. I agree a hundred percent.
Laura, any comment? Did you get out there and take a look at it?
Our board had to hear it. So we all went and looked at it as well. And I spoke with, with him months ago already on this. He had made contact initially about what was going to be his process. So I referred him to the county and.
Jim, anything?
No.
Oh. All right. Someone care to make a motion?
I made a motion to approve.
Okay, as, as presented.
As presented. But then we voted with. Can I add that now?
Yes.
Okay.
You haven't said.
Procedure. I, I made a motion to approve it. Stipulating that a rain catch basin approved by county zoning is established as part of the project. With the small structure 19 feet away from the lake on the north side to be removed within 90 days of the permit issuance. And if that is not, uh, removed within that timeframe. Fine, be issued of $500 a day.
Yeah, pick a number. All right, um, is there a second to the motion as presented?
I'll second that motion.
Was been made in seconded discussion. Uh, we have to do the findings of past and, and that sort of thing. So, uh, it's get our cheat sheets out for that. Um,
What sheet?
Um, up in the front there, the little blue stuff. Yeah, your hands on it.
Get my vocals.
Okay.
Number four, I do not feel it would be damaging to the rights of others or, or property values. I don't feel it would be detrimental to ecology, wildlife, wetlands or shorelands. I think we're actually enhancing the situation. I don't think it would have anything to do with creating air quality, water supplier pollution problems. I don't feel it would cause any wetland runoff problems with the rain garden and capture basin.
Yeah. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion as presented, signify by saying aye. Aye, I'll post same sign. Let the record reflect the motions passed by a vote of four to zero. All right.
Good luck, fellas.
You can stop by the office and they'll walk you through the permit process.
Okay.
Yep.
Uh, no appeal cases, uh, as part of kind of an update, we talked last month about that. Uh, talked to TJ on Monday and also again today. That's Hertzwell appeal case is still in the appellate court and they have not heard or made a decision on the stay motion. So no news.
Okay.
And I don't really have any other new business.
The only thing I think that.
Uh, we never did a roll call vote.
Al did. Oh, Al called the roll. And said who was here.
Um. Not just this Hertzwell thing, but in. In the event that this board ever appeals a decision. Um, I think that the entire board should make that determination. And I think this last one, it was, it fell on me. And uh, and I would like us all to to be in on on that decision, whether to appeal or not appeal.
Um, I would agree. It 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 shouldn't be just on your shoulder.
Well, I just, I welcome the input, you know, that's, that's why there's more than one. So we all get a good, 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 good fresh look at it and then. We don't have to meet people on the street to tell us what's happening, um, because you, you may, you helped make, we all helped make the decision collectively.
I would agree, and really it was, you know, I'm not afraid to say it, um, you know, that TJ never filed briefs, and it was found as default. So someone appealed your decision and you had no one in your corner to even submit any information. Right. So at that point, the judge just said, well, if I'm not hearing from the other side, yeah, I'll overturn it. And that I don't think is fair either, because I think there should at least be a a fair day in court.
Yeah.
Um, so that's where again, TJ and I talked to you and said, well, TJ, sorry, I didn't file a briefs. Can I appeal that default motion? And that's how that went, because on the other one we had where. Your decision as the board was overturned for COLA. When they went against that uh, the Millers variance, that one we did have representation at, and it was still overturned and kicked back.
Yeah.
So that's the difference of the two. And that one we did bring back to say, do you want to further appeal this appeal? And he said, no, right, the other one was a default judgment, because he didn't get his stuff in in time.
Okay, anything else for the good of the board? And then is there a motion to adjourn, I'll make that motion. Made in seconded? All the favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned, alright.